Good evening, everyone. I'm Mandy Martin, the mayor of Crammy Township, and I call this committee of the whole to order at 6:01 PM November 14th, 2023. As we gather, we would like to formally recognise the traditional keepers of this land, and specifically our neighbours of the Alderville First Nation, with a formal territorial acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that Crammy Township is located on the Mississauga Ashen Abbey territory, the traditional territory of the Mississauga Ashen Abbey. Crammy Township acknowledges that the Mississauga Nations are the collective stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity. And they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. In accordance with bylaw 2020, 17 members of the public are to advise the mayor or the clerk of the use of devices for transcribing or recording the proceedings of open session by auditory or visual means prior to the meeting. Item four on our agenda is confirmation of the agenda and the resolution reads, be it resolved that the agenda for the November 14th, 2023 Committee of the Whole meeting be approved as presented. Could I have a mover, a seconder, please?
Move, Van Egmond.
Second, Hamilton.
Any discussion? All in favour?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Van Egmond, aye.
Martin, aye, the resolution is carried. And just for the information of everyone, deputy mayor Arthur is under the weather, but she is rising to the challenge and joining us by Zoom to participate in this evening's meeting. Thank you very much, Sandra.
Thank you.
Do any members of council have any declarations of conflicts or pecuniary interests to declare on items? Seeing none? We move to item six, agenda question period. Individuals must submit their questions to the clerk's office no later than one hour prior to the meeting. Questions submitted must pertain to an item on this current agenda and are not to be in opinion, statement or comments. Any submissions that are not a question or do not pertain to an item on the agenda will be omitted from this section. All questions will be read aloud during the question period by the clerk and/or chair. And just to expand, there is at the end of the meeting a time for public questions on any topic. I understand that we have had questions submitted.
So the first question is from DNJ Holdings. Would Mandy Martin recuse herself from all details of this procedure as she has a link through her previous employment? I believe this is about the battery storage, because some of the questions are about the battery storage. So that's the first question.
No, I will not recuse myself. In 1993, I left the employment of Ontario Hydro, which is now known as Hydro One. There have been several company changes since then. And no, I do not have any conflicts of interest. I am not a pensioner. I have no income or whatever that derives from anything to do with Ontario Hydro.
Question two. Why was there only two days' notice for the public meeting for base load power energy storage project? And does council believe that people were aware of this meeting and it provided ample time for residents to show up?
By public meeting, do you mean the advertised public meeting that was held at the Keeler Centre? Is this question from somebody here or on the... They send them in?
Okay. It just says public meeting, it doesn't specify arena or otherwise. But I think that was the only public meeting that's happened so far is up one of the arena that they advertised.
Which was called by the company itself?
Yes.
For the benefit of the public. That was before we had heard anything. This is our first go-round hearing, hearing details of this. And all notices duly given as per publication of our agendas the Thursday before the next council meeting. So there has been notice given.
Question three. What insurance is base load carrying if this operation goes into production? What insurance is the person that is leasing the property to base load carrying? Has the legal department reviewed it to see if it is adequate?
We haven't heard their presentation yet. We are about to hear their presentation this evening. They are on our delegations list coming up. And so I think questions can be addressed there. If not there, then after we hear from the presentation. Please keep in mind, this is council's first hearing of this project as a council.
Question four. What is the distance radius for property value adjustment in regards to property taxes? And how would property owners be compensated for the loss of value to their property and for what radius would that extend?
Again, I'm assuming that this question is relating to what we're going to hear about this evening. And I think that those questions can be addressed thereafter.
Question five. How much is being paid to the property owner to lease his land per year?
That is a private business matter, I would say right off the bat, I have no idea. Yes, I'm answering this one that has been submitted. And then I will get to you. So I think that that is, those are all details, I'm not sure that that's anybody's business. It's a private land deal, a private matter.
Question six. What is a community benefit fund? Is it a percentage of profits or a set amount? And how will council use this money?
We have yet to hear the details. We are going to hear from the company.
Question seven. How much will it cost the township to upgrade the fire department and train all possible people involved in a possible disaster?
I think that our fire department is well-trained and capable of handling all emergencies as they are made aware of things that are coming in. Just as we plan for all the companies and industries within this community, many of them. For example, I think I cited they're trained for CN derailments or trained CP derailments, et cetera, for industrial accidents, whatever. We, our firefighters have to be certified and recognised provincially and standardised training equipment and so on. And I think that these are matters that are well-covered, well-covered. Whether it's this project or another, and we haven't heard, may I re-emphasise this? We have yet to hear the presentation.
Question eight. Is there a disaster plan in case of an emergency due to this project? And how much is the project projected cost per year?
Projected cost of an emergency plan? These are all details, by the way, that are worked out before anything goes forward. All the planning, all the safety standards, all the provincial standards, et cetera, must be met before anything goes ahead. These are all factors that are considered as we go into this matter.
Question nine. Has the township studied the possible impact of farmland or drinking water in the area in case of a disaster?
We are hearing about this project for the first time this evening as a council. I think you're way ahead of the game in terms of what is being presented this evening and the plans that are going forward. This will not happen in isolation, doesn't happen instantaneously. We are not here tonight to approve everything in any kind of form. We're just going to hear the proposition and consider, do we consider more?
The 10th and final question. Would council notify all Crammy residents in writing to inform them of this project and hold another open house to be sure that all that could be affected are aware before a decision is made?
I don't know, that's a decision of council and we'll make decisions after we all hear about it.
There's another question from another resident that mentions...
I'm under the understanding that we're...
This is councillor Hamilton.
Sorry, mayor. Committee member, Hamilton, tonight. I was under the understanding that we identify who's asking the questions. And nobody was identified in the previous set of questions. So I'm just curious, am I right?
Dave Telephone Road. So the next question's from another resident, which I think falls under the delegation as well, because it uses similar wording. I would like to ask the council the question, what does the community benefit fund entail? And is it worth the risk to the community with the potential safety issues that could arise from the proposed project of a B E S S? Are they willing to take that risk? It's from Jacqueline Marie Greenin from Telephone Road.
And we have to hear what the proposal is. So we are going to... They're read here so that we consider as we go forward in the agenda. There's another period at the end of the council where the public questions and other questions can be answered or whatever.
That's all we have for right now.
Are you satisfied? Is that good? Yep. Okay, and I understand there was another question, but it doesn't pertain to any item on this particular agenda. But we will bring it forward in the public question period at the end of the session. Okay. Item seven on our agenda is delegations and presentations. And we have a base load power energy storage project. And we have James Ratcliffe and Paul Merker here to make the presentation. So the resolution reads, be it resolved that committee of the whole received the delegation from base load power for information. I just need a mover and a seconder, please.
Move, Van Egmond.
Second, Hamilton.
Thank you, welcome. Gentlemen, please proceed.
So once again, good evening, I'm mayor and council, thanks for having us. I'm Paul Merker from Base Load Power and this is James Kennedy. We understand, we need to keep this brief, so we'll do about a 10-minute presentation. As I've mentioned, there's a lot of more detailed information at the end of the presentation in like an appendices. And we're here to answer any questions as well after that. So just a little bit about base load power. We've been developing renewable energy projects for the last, you know, 20 years. And between the different principles, we have about 60 years of combined experience. We've been focused on battery energy storage, other renewables, solar, wind. And we're also building out a network of EV charging stations for electric vehicles. We've generated around a billion and a half dollars of electricity infrastructure in Ontario, Alberta, the primary jurisdictions, and we have around 2,500 megawatts of projects that are in development. Yeah, thank you. So basically, you know, what is happening right now in the province is that the province is entering into a period where we're going to have significant electricity needs. And there's a number of reasons for that. One of the main reasons is that, you know, the Pickering nuclear facility that they've kept extending out, the plan is that it is going to be, in the relative near term, decommissioned. It's coming towards, it's already past its original useful life, they've kept extending it. So when that comes off, that's a significant amount of our generating capacity in the province. And some of the other reasons are, you know, the electrification of transportation, of industry population growth. And so the provincial regulator that regulates the electricity system, known as the independent electricity system operator or the ISO, the province has directed them to begin a procurement process, a competitive procurement process based on price, to obtain these electricity resources. And they had the first bid last February, and the next bid is coming up in this December. And basically, it's a competitive process where projects from across the province bid their project in. And, you know, the province looks at all of the different applications. And really, the projects that win are going to have the lowest price to deliver the electricity services. In this, in the procurement in February and this one in December, what the province is really focused on is energy storage and natural gas expansions. Not new natural gas, but existing plant expansions. The reason it's focused, a lot of their focus is on energy storage, and I'll mention it as we get a little further along, is that the province realises the benefits to the grid and how much more efficient energy storage can make our existing grid. And so that's one of their main focuses. And as I mentioned, you know, one of the, and I'll mention it later, but as I said, it's a competitive process. The, we don't know the exact number of projects that will get bid into this process from across the province. It could be 50 or 100 or more projects. Probably five to seven will be successful. So even if we bid this in, there's no guarantee that we're going to win a contract. If we don't win a contract, there may be another bid a year or so out, we would try again. But if the project is not awarded a contract, it doesn't go forward. The other thing I just want to mention, sort of to council, is we're at the beginning of this process. So as I mentioned, the bid date for the request for proposal is in December. If we're successful with our bid and we win a contract, we won't even find out, the province won't get through all of the, reviewing all of the proposals. We won't find out likely until the spring of 2024. So it's going to be almost six months or so until we even know, do we win a contract or not? If we do win a contract, then really all of the permitting and municipal processes will start at that point in time. So for example, one of the things we're going to be required to do is to do an environmental assessment under the class EA, under the Ontario Assessment Act, for minor transmission facilities, which is the same process, environmental process, that Hydro One undertakes for its transmission stations and substations and those things. So we would have to do studies of species at risk and, you know, hydrology studies and a whole bunch of studies. We would also have to go through the municipal process. So this, these projects are subject to municipal control through zoning and byline, those kind of things. So even if we are successful, you know, and we're sort of estimating that those processes will take, you know, could be up to a year as well. So in terms of even beginning to build the project, if we're successful, it's 2025 at the earliest kind of thing. So nothing is happening quickly. We have to go through all of those different processes. And there's going to be a lot of different additional community engagement, open houses, you know, through the environmental process, through the municipal process. So we're just at the beginning of this process. Just to the next slide, please. So just very quickly, one of the things about an energy storage system is that it's part of the transmission system for the province. It connects directly into the Hydro One grid. In fact, some of the equipment that we have to install and build, we have to transfer ownership to Hydro One because it's interconnected. And really, like any electricity equipment, whether it's a substation or this, there is some risk of fire. The risk is low, you know, similar to Hydro One substations. I mean, there is a risk of fire there, but they're a low risk. And so it's something that is important and we're very aware of and has to be managed properly. But it is kind of, sort of in that sort of vein of things. One of the things, as we talk about further, you know, you'll see a lot of Hydro One substations, for example, close to residences, can be 100 metres or those kind of things. One of the things that we will point out later on is that one of the reasons we like this area, and there's a number of them, but we're able to set back the project a significant distance from anyone's residence, around almost 900 metres. And so that's just another layer, even though with their safe projects and there's a lot of safety features built in, it just adds another sort of safety feature, you know, to the project. So quickly, an energy storage system is basically a number of battery modules that are contained within a steel sort of container system that, you know, has fiberglass insulation, and it's a modular system. So each sort of shelf there would contain a battery. Everything is compartmentalised with other steel framing, you know, with other additional fire protection. There's cooling systems in the units, you know, there's venting systems in the units. The system is monitored, each battery unit is monitored 24/7. So that if there is ever is an issue, we're aware of it right away. The fire department, who we have to, you know, work on a plant together, will be notified right away. We'll have people in the, you know, close proximity who will also work, you know, for the project to be there. And so there's a tremendous number of safety features, you know, built into it. One of the other things I'll mention quickly is that when you hear the term lithium batteries, lithium is, when you hear lithium batteries, it's a catch-all phrase for a number of lithium battery chemistries. So one of the chemistries, for example, they call it NMC. So it's lithium with nickel and magnesium and cobalt. And, you know, that technology, you know, in terms of some of the fires you've seen, and that's maybe more related to some of the cars and everything, is because that's a more energy-dense chemistry. And the reason that they were doing that at first is that, you know, batteries can be very heavy. And so if you can make it more energy-dense, you can shrink the size of the battery so it's not as heavy. But they started to realise, even though it was still a very low risk, it had a bit higher risk of fire because of that energy density. As well, you know, if you've got nickel and cobalt and other metals, if there is a fire, you can have some toxicity from those metals. The technology that we're using is not that or others, it's lithium phosphate. So basically, it's a lower-density battery, so the risk of fire is less. There's no metals like cobalt or those things in it. So if there is a fire, you're not dealing with any, you know, toxic issues or those kind of things. Just the next slide, please. So quickly, you know, batteries don't create new electricity. What they basically do is they use the electricity we have on the system in a much more efficient way. And that actually helps not only reduce costs for the ratepayers, but it also reduces the need for additional transmission lines or new generation. So basically, what happens is at night in Ontario, we often have a surplus of electricity. And the main reason for that actually is that 50% of our electricity is based on nuclear and a lot of natural gas. Especially nuclear, you can't just ramp it up or ramp it down, right? It just doesn't work like that. And if you do, it's very expensive. And so we always have this sort of level of power on the system. And during the day, when we have a lot of demand, well, that power is there. But often at night time, we have surplus. And we can't just have the surplus on the system, we have to deal with it. And so often what we do is we ship it to New York State or to Quebec or other jurisdictions that we're interconnected into. And we often have to pay them to take that power. Then what happens sometimes during the day, on a very hot day or cold day, and air conditioning units are all on and businesses are running, we often face a bit of a shortage. So then we're actually buying back power from those jurisdictions that we paid to take our electricity. And we're buying it back at premium prices. Now, that's not a unique thing for Ontario, there's lots of jurisdictions that have it, it's just the way that these systems work. So what the energy, what the storage system does is at night, we draw the power down into the battery, we contain it there, and then based on signals that we get from the province that we need more power, we will then inject that power in during the day when demand is high. And so that's one of the reasons why the province really likes this technology. This is happening all over the world, you know, it's newer in Ontario and in Canada, but there's a lot in the States and Europe. And so it makes the system much more efficient. And also from a cost perspective, even in the last bid that just happened in February, battery storage was very competitive with natural gas expansions. In a lot of cases, was less costly, actually. So quickly about the project here. So the project that we're proposing is an up to 125-megawatt system at four hours, meaning it can discharge 125-megawatts into the system for four hours in duration, which sort of meets that demand period during the day when we may have shortages. So that is a significant amount of power. From a land perspective, it's going to be somewhere in the neighbourhood of seven to 10 acres of land total used for the project. Like, that's kind of what's going to be, and that's including if there's any access roads and, you know, the connection to the grid and all of those kind of things. As mentioned, you know, one of the reasons we like this area, besides that, you know, as you get in eastern Ontario and further east, this is an area of significant energy needs that's coming up in the near term. And it also allowed us to set back the project around almost 900 metres from any residences. We were outside of any environmentally sensitive areas. We've had discussions with the conservation authority, they didn't have any concerns as well. And the ISO has, with all projects that are being developed, they do sort of a pre-assessment to make sure that where you're proposing to connect is actually possible, like the grid can take it, and it's also good for the grid. Because what they don't want is projects being bid in and winning a contract. And then six months or a year later, you go to Hydro One and Hydro One says, we can't connect you. So they have done that assessment of the project. And what they've assessed is that this project can be up to 125-megawatts, and it's beneficial for the system. Next slide, please. As mentioned, you know, we're basically building it very close to the existing transmission line. So we don't need to run lines across, you know, the road, you know, the municipal, you know, road allowances and, you know, connecting all over the place. You know, it's outside of any water protection area. And one of the things about energy storage, just from a, sort of a, putting things in context. As mentioned, this project for 125-megawatts will use around seven to 10 acres. If you were doing a solar project of 125-megawatts, you would need about 1,000 acres of land. You know, it's covered in solar panels. And a wind farm at 125-megawatts, you would need, depending on the turbine megawatt size, 30-plus wind turbines spread over thousands of acres and transmission lines and those kind of... So it's a very efficient use of land for a lot of electricity, you know, system benefits. As I said, in a very efficient use of real estate. So there is just the project map. Just to be clear, the red on the map, those are the full parcels of land. That's not the size of the project, it's not going all over the red. The blue box is the area within which the project would go. So even that blue box is bigger than 10 acres, because we're going to be studying. And we may, based on our findings, maybe we'll find a species at risk over here, and we have to shift it a little bit over here. So the, within that blue box is where the seven to 10 acres of the project would go. And then you'll see a green, sort of the transmission, the line that will connect the project into the orange lines running, you know, kind of east-west, which are the existing transmission lines. And we connect right there. So a very compact project at a significant distance from anyone's home. In terms of some of the questions that were asked, so in terms of the project, there's a number of local benefits. So one of the things we mentioned at the open house we had is that for our projects, you know, we always propose to municipalities creating a community benefit fund. And basically, it's an agreement between us and the municipality, where every year from the project, there will be revenue from the project that will go to the municipality. And, you know, the municipality determines what they want to use it for, but it's usually community initiatives. It could be, you know, recreational facilities, parks, it could be programs for kids, seniors, it can be whatever, but it's in that kind of vein. What we offer is $1,000 per megawatt of the project. So as this is a 125-megawatt project, what we would propose is that the payment every year will be $125,000 for the life of the project. So every year from the project would be $125,000. So our contract, if we are awarded one, is 20 years. So that would end up being, you know, over, my math is not good, but, you know, two-plus million dollars or more over the 20 years. In addition, there will be some increased tax revenues, and we would have to speak with the planning department. And I guess NPAC would get involved, but there would be some increased tax revenues as well. And as well, in all of our projects, you know, we look to, it's beneficial for us in the projects, we look to use as many local resources as we can, you know, for construction services, for materials, you know, for ongoing services, you know, whether it's maintenance or snow removal and all of those things. So a project of this size, in terms of the local materials and labour and equipment, would probably be somewhere in the neighbourhood of five to potentially up to $10 million on the construction side of things for the project. And very quickly, you will talk about it later, but one of the things we also would enter into with the municipality as part of the, during the zoning process and everything, is a road use agreement where, you know, we're agreeing that, you know, any damage, any upgrades that need to be done to roads at our cost and expense, any damage done to roads, we have to fix at our cost and expense. We would do a pre-assessment of the condition of the road. Any damage done to roads, we have to fix at our cost and expense. We would do a pre-assessment of the condition of the roads to make sure it's all documented. Uh, we'd have security deposits and all of those kind of things. So the idea behind the project is, is that there are no costs to the municipality. Uh, for, you know, the use of roads, for services, uh, for anything. Um, if, you know, when we deal with the fire department, putting a plan together. If there's additional equipment or training that's required, that's at our cost and expense. So that's the concept of 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 this project here. So in terms of what we have done is we had a, we had our first, uh, community meeting. Now that meeting was not done under like a municipal process. But under the provincial R F P process, we were required to hold an open house. And in that, uh, open house, we were required to notify all residents, what was it again, James?
It's adjacent landowners.
Yeah.
It, which really they share, uh, property boundary.
Yeah.
The I E S O defines it. We went one step further with the notice and went to a little bit over a kilometer radius from where the battery would go. And those notices were delivered to those residents, uh, fourteen days prior, more than fourteen days prior via courier.
Yeah. So those were the notices. We also notified the municipality, I believe we no- notified the.
Both municipalities.
Municipality. So we, we, we met those requirements, we even went further than what was required. But but as mentioned, this is just the first of many. Open houses and other community engagements, if we're successful in winning a, uh, a project. We've spoken with, as I mentioned, the Conservation Authority, um, they didn't have concerns in terms of the location. Um, and, you know, Ministry of Energy and others. And as mentioned, you know, if we're awarded a contract, there'll be a lot of, over the next couple of years. Uh, of community engagement.
One piece I would just add is we have also spoken with the fire chief about the project, uh, who did not have any concerns. And as Paul already spoke about, we. Explain that there'd be additional training and equipment, all of that at the cost of the, uh, of the project, if the project moves forward.
So just a quick summary of the, of the meeting, um, it was on the seventh for six to eight, we had about twenty-two people signed in on the sheet. Um, we had feedback forms with, you know, self, with, uh, you know, stamped addressed, uh, envelopes to send it back to us. Um, the presentation was also posted to our project website, uh, and as well available from the township. And some of the main questions were, once again, meat related to fire and groundwater setbacks, uh, and the municipal approval process were for some of the key. Uh, questions that were addressed and raised and addressed at that meeting. So we're, we're coming to the end. So as I mentioned, there's a lot of information in the appendices on a number of topics, but the main topics that came up. Were, one was the, was noise. So just very quickly on that, this project, um, is. Is subject to the provincial, uh, noise regulations and the document is called the N P C. Three hundred, it's from the Ontario Ministry of the Environment. Basically, um, in a rural setting. They are the strictest noise requirements of any location in the province. And so basically, the project needs to be. And and it can't operate if it's not, but it needs to be at every, every residence is where the assessment is done. It needs to be at forty D B's or below at every residence, which is the, as I said, the quietest and strictest noise. Uh, you know, guidelines that there are. And so, you know, if we, we have to be able to meet those regulations in order, uh, you know, to operate now. One of the reasons also that we like the, the, this area and the setback we can have, you wouldn't need to. You wouldn't need nine hundred meters to meet the noise guidelines. But, you know, when we were looking for areas, you know, just as a first principle of development. You know, we sort of said, you know, you could, for example, likely cite a project like this, four hundred meters from somebody's house, three hundred, five hundred meters. But we were sort of looking and saying, where can we find locations where, you know, that might work and be fine. But we think from a, from a neighbor perspective and a community perspective, if we can set things back as far as we can. We just think it's, it's a good principle, right? I think, I think people would prefer it being nine hundred meters away as opposed to four hundred meters away. So that's one of the benefits. And as I, as I said, you know, this is similar equipment to, you know, hydro, large hydro one substations. Which are often much closer, but we wanted to, you know, we understand we're coming into a community, there's going to be concerns. Uh, and we just thought that, you know, in our projects, that what we look to do on that. From a fire management perspective. Um, once again, there are, there are standard protocols on how to deal with. Energy storage fires similar to if it's a hydro one substation fire. Um, and in terms of when we go through, if we get to the process of going and working with the municipality on zoning and site plan control and those things. We'll also be putting in together a number of plans in consultation with the municipality. There will be a construction plan and an operational plan. There'll be a decommissioning plan. We're going to have a fire management and safety plan that we work on with the fire chief and the fire department. To implement all of those protocols, you know, that are needed. Um, you know, from groundwater, um, you know. We're not really expecting that this should be, you know, an issue. Um, once again, if there is a fire. Generally with these kind of fires, similar to, as I said, I keep going back to like a substation. Usually it's a fire in one battery module within the contained system. And so generally what you're looking to do, and you'll have a number of containers that are also spread out, you look to kind of make sure everything else is shut off. And kind of kept cool. And generally, you're letting that burn out. You're not putting pouring water on it. You're not pouring chemicals on it. So you're not dealing with a lot of runoff or those kind of things. If there is any, you know, there are containment. Uh, you know, basins in each of the units, but it's, that's not really the way you deal with it. And as mentioned as well, with the lithium chemistry that we're using. It's not, we're not, there's no heavy metals and those kind of things in it. So, um, it's something that we'll have to, uh, put together. We're also going to have to do, you know, groundwater. Um, you know, stormwater management plans and all those kind of things will be part of it. Finally, and then I think my time is over, is the, for the decommissioning plan. So the life of the project, the initial life, if we win a contract with the province, it's for twenty years. Now, it's, it's somewhat likely that if we get to year fifteen, the province may say. This project is part of the transmission system. We would like to continue running it further. And and so it could be that the contract is extended. But when the project does come to the end of its life, um, the batteries last for more than twenty years, the efficiency goes down. But there is, of course, value in those batteries. They can be used for other things. For example, a lot of, um. Industries are using batteries now behind the meter for their own facilities. So you can, you can repurpose that as well. There are already two recycling facilities in Ontario to deal with, uh, recycling of batteries. And as what's happening in the province, especially in the southwest, where we're getting a lot of, uh, auto manufacturing and the Ford government is really pushing for. You know, battery manufacturing in the province, you know, our expectation is that there'll be a number of additional battery. Uh, recycling, uh, plants that will be, uh, set up over the number, the next number of years. But once again, we will have, we will, uh. Put together a decommissioning plan with the municipality to deal with, you know, the decommissioning of the site. So I think those were the slides before we get into the. Oh, key permits and approvals? Well, I think really quickly, as I mentioned, we have all of the environmental approvals we have to go through, which is the same as. What Hydro One has to go through, it's the class EA for minor transmission facilities, because this is what this is, it's a transmission facility. Um. And I guess really we can go to the last slide. So what, what we will be requesting from the municipality and, you know, prior to the bid. Uh, in December, is what we're hopeful for is to get a, what's called the municipal support resolution or or support confirmation. And what that is, it's not an approval of the project. It basically is a, is a general indication of support from the municipality. You know, that the, that the region and the province needs the electricity, um, you know, it's a, there's benefits from the project and those kind of things. And all that does is. Is that if we have it prior to our bid, it's included with our bid application. And it provides, um, a more favorable review by the province. It does help to get a contract. But it doesn't guarantee it in any way. Um, and as I said, we may not end up getting a contract. In a similar vein, but we do this with our projects as well, you know, we are, um, uh, working with and finalizing. Uh, an agreement with with local First Nations as well to be involved a- as an ownership position in our projects. Um, you know, for a number of reasons, but all that does again is it makes the application more favorable. If we do win, once again. That support resolution is not an approval. We still have to go through zoning, site plan control and any other, uh, municipal permitting processes. So now I think that was the last slide, correct?
That was the end.
That was it. So thank you, appreciate the time. And if there's any questions, we're, we're happy to, to answer.
Thank you, Councilor Van Egmond.
Yeah, you mentioned that it's on Turk Road.
Yes.
It's not. It's on Kaiser Road. In Crammy Township, that is the Kaiser Road from the twenty-five. To the western edge of the ground, ground out property. So that is actually called the Kaiser Road there. Um, although there are no houses presently, there are, um, I, I know if. I live on twenty-one, so I, I have property, I farm prop, I farm property all around this. My big question is, the same farmers own property on the. East side of that road allowance that you call a farm entry. I believe that is an, um, an open road allowance that Crammy owns, goes from Telephone Road to the Kaiser Road. Um, so there would have to be discussion whether you can. Use an unopened road allowance as your entry to the facility. My question is. The power that will be generated for these batteries, is that to be. propane, uh, natural, natural gas?
No.
It's just going to be, uh, taken from the hydro grid and stored there?
Yes.
Okay. I see you have the yellow lines marked as the high transmission lines. I know that they have just put in lines, and it wasn't that long ago, down Neil McGregor Road. That was for all the, to attach all the, um, um, power, uh. Solar farms, the solar energy places. Um, but this would be transmitted then to the cross lines that go east-west?
Yeah, so if I can, it's through you.
Oh, just, just a minute, I'm sorry. I want to finish all my questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Why, why was the property north of the Kaiser Road identified in brown? And not the property on the east side of the road allowance? Because the same farmer owns it all.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ca- Councilor Van Egmond through you, uh, mayor. Um, so I guess. If I forget some of the questions, please just remind me, but I think on your first one, in terms of the access to the property. Uh, including, you know, if we are successful in a contract and having to bring the equipment in, you know, we would have to consult with the municipality, the roads department. On what is the best route? And so if, if it is, if, if we would, if it is, if we do require, or if it's determined that using that. Unopen road allowance is maybe the best or part of the best route, because we would have to use the roads to get to the area, but maybe we would. Want to use that road allowance, we would have to consult with the municipality. Is that something that can be done? What are, what is the best route to bring things in and and all those kind of things? In terms of your question about the system itself. So all the, all the batteries are doing is they're directly connected into those orange lines that go east-west. And generally at nighttime, as I mentioned, there's often surplus power on those lines that gets wasted. And so all we're doing is, we're drawing, generally at night, we're drawing that excess power. That gets wasted and we often have to pay other jurisdictions to take from us. We're going to store it locally. So it'll probably take us around. Five somewhat hours to charge the batteries. So the electricity comes right off those lines, we charge the batteries. Takes about five hours and then that electricity will be stored and then we're able to during the day when demand is high. Inject it back into the, into those lines, which feeds like a, like a large area. And so that's sort of what's happening on that, uh, the way the project works. In terms of your question about the land on the east side. Of the road allowance, yes, that is the same owner. But where we're looking to put the project is sort of where we've shown it within that kind of blue box. On those properties that are identified in red.
I would just.
Because that is on the north side, that I think we, we must have seen Turk Road from by Google.
Yeah, we got that from Google and from speaking with the planning department. So apologies for having the, the wrong name there. Uh, the, there's three parcels there that are stacked. North to south. Uh, as Paul was saying, the blue box represents where the batteries would go. The parcel in the middle to the north, we would need to connect to those existing power lines. So though that parcel would be used. For that connection route, which is what the green and the black line represent. And then that northernmost parcel is identified because that's where we actually. Connect to the power lines.
Yeah.
So it's those three parcels where there is small parts of the project, but the majority of the project would be located on that southern parcel in the blue area.
Yeah, and and once again, you know, we wanted to locate it there. Uh, for a number of reasons. One is that gave us the biggest setbacks from any residences. We also, you know, if we can avoid it, we, you know, if you look at the parcel to the north, you know, there's a, a, you know, a relatively large woodlot. You know, we weren't looking to cut down trees if we can. So it was a whole bunch of things where, you know, we wanted to. Have setbacks, not cut down trees. So we have to have a little bit of longer of that green connection line that runs along the private property. But then we do have to cross over that road because as James mentioned, the transmission lines are actually on the north side of that road.
The north part will not be used as a battery storage.
No, because the, well, I guess a couple of things. One is the Conservation Authority area. On that property is actually at the north half of that property. So we're, we're, we're avoiding that. But really, the main reason, once again, is just for setbacks from residences. Cause if we put it, if we were to put it. On the north side of that property on the north, one is, yes, we would maybe for that sort of getting into some conservation area lands. But then on top of it, you know, we're closer to residences. Hmm.
I know.
I believe there's a residence. Well, there was a.
What you do in the forest right there, you wouldn't get out of the forest gate.
Well, well, we don't want to be in the forest, but then also it was interesting because at the open house, we did have a few people who said that they lived. Right off of, you know, the kind of that, what we've defined as Turk Road.
I think on the, on the other side of the municipal line, uh.
Yeah.
There, there are, uh, three lots, you can see the houses. And there's also a. On the north side of the road, near where the power lines are, there is a big area that maybe it's just, uh, farm yard. But our understanding was that there was a house there as well.
North side where?
Uh, the north side, if you see the.
Right.
I, I got up and walked to the map. Um. So right where your most, just south of where your most is, there's a, yeah, right around there, there is what looks like a farm yard and. We thought there might have been a house there. So as Paul explained, try to avoid those houses.
So, yeah, it, it means, once again, there's a number of factors. And one is biggest setbacks, two, we're trying to avoid environmentally sensitive areas. And also if we can't avoid, you know, taking down a lot of trees.
I, I guess what worries me most is the people that live on Telephone Road that are stones throw in. And I, I'm not sure that it is nine hundred meters there. You guys have probably figured it out, so it probably is, but. There, there is nu- there are numerous residences underneath where you nicely put Telephone Road. There are numerous residences right there. And there's also a residence.
Here. Which could be nine hundred, I'd be very close, but I also know that some of these other people. Are looking to put houses in. How far then are the houses allowed to be from this facility?
Yeah, so when we, when we do the noise, like, and and once again, when we're, we have to meet all the regulations, but when we're doing, um. The assessments, we have to take into account not only existing residences, we have to to take into account vacant lots. Right? So when there's a vacant lot, you know, nobody knows one, will a house ever get built on it? But we have to make the assumption that there will be. And so we do make an allocation for that. We'll, we'll, you know, the, 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 the sort of the. The noise engineers, when they do their assessments, they'll make, they'll say on a vacant lot, okay, we would, we would, um. Um, expect or would be reasonable to expect that the, the home would go sort of in this area, right? Like. That's follow similar development patterns in the area for existing homes. So, yeah, they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't do their assessment and go, okay. On a vacant lot, if a house is built, we're going to make the assessment that the house is six hundred meters into the property, right? They're going to likely do it. Closer to the road where other homes are built, but we do have to take into account vacant lots. And so once again, we're in that, you know. Area, area of around nine hundred some odd meters, uh, from everything. And so once again, what I would say, you know, councillor is that. You know, for sure, this is not a small installation, um. And so once again, what I would say, you know, councillor, is that, you know, for sure, this is not a small installation, um, but you know, there in, in some areas, you know, I'm, I'm, I am making somewhat of the comparison to a, you know, a large hydro one, you know, transmission, uh, station, where, you know, it can be quite a large footprint, also electricity transmission infrastructure, and often those are, as I said, very close to people's homes. Um, you know, this is in a lot of cases, you know, five times more distance from any, anyone's homes. In addition, what we can do is, you know, if it's, if it's beneficial, we can do visual screening. Uh, I mean, one of the things, these, these units, the, the containers are not very tall, so it's not like a big tall structure. We can do visual screening, uh, we will have security fencing around everything to make sure nobody's trying to get in there, like, like similar to a hydro one substation. But we can also do visual screening with plantings, berms, different kinds of things.
Thank you.
The Schreiber.
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you, gentlemen, for the present.
Could you just, we, yeah, it's a one-off, one person at a time, yeah.
Thanks for the presentation, um, tonight, it was very well done. I've got two or three questions, unlike councillor Van Egmond, I choose to go one at a time, uh, rather than get them all out at once. But my first one is, uh, just around the AESO process and your application, so should you guys get selected as a proponent? Um, is there a timeline with respect, uh, that you're given to get the necessary permits from the township? And, uh, before that, that, uh, application expires?
Yeah, thank you councillor, the, the, there's not a, I'm just have to thinking this, there's not a specific time in the ISO contract to get the permits, but there are deadlines where the project has to reach commercial operations, which I believe is three years? No, it's less, it's a twenty twenty, twenty twenty eight. So if you don't meet those timelines, you first start to face like, you know, you lose some of your term, liquidated damages, and eventually you could be in default and, um, you know. And so one of the things when you put your application in, you know, to, to bid in, you have to put up bid security. And so there'll be millions of dollars of bid security, so if you do win a contract and you don't actually build it, you forfeit that security. So there is a timeline, but it's not specifically related to just the permits.
Okay, thank you for that, um, and to change the subject dramatically, I know that, um, and again, this is not a subject that I'm particularly familiar with, but I know that there's a lot of, um, you know, natural minerals, let's call them, in these batteries. And I'm just curious about what processes the AESO has in place for their procurement process that ensures that these are being sourced in an ethical manner? Because I know, you know, a lot of this stuff comes from China perhaps, or South Africa. Um, so is there some transparency with respect to where these batteries are coming from? And I'm also curious about, uh, many of the governance that you have in place with respect to your suppliers and how you're procuring these, this hardware.
Thank you councillor, so in terms of the, um, in terms of the batteries themselves, I mean, you may get different components from, from different places because it is a kind of a modular system. Um, you know, we are in, like, in terms of the supplier that we will be using, um, you know, generally what happens is you'll, you'll um, be dealing with a few different suppliers, and if you're, when you get your pricing, and if you win, you determine which is the best one. Um, the companies that we are in discussions with and, you know, that, that get used for these utility scale projects are all your top tier manufacturers. There's, you know, there's Tesla, Siemens, uh, has a, you know, a sort of a venture called Fluentz, and, you know, Mitsubishi. And so, you know, the large companies, you know, part of the reason for that is for a number of reasons. One is, you know, in order to, um, build these projects, uh, you have to deal with lenders, pension funds to provide the debt. They require it to be tier one, uh, manufacturers that have the best equipment, the best safety profile, uh, the best warranties. Uh, same thing for the insurance companies, so, you know, the insurance companies, um, that insure these projects, and there was a question on that. Um, they're actually, I mean, they're the risk experts, and the reason that they're comfortable and they are providing full insurance in all these projects is that they know there is some risk, but they're very low risk and they're, and they're comfortable with it. So I, I don't have the, I don't have information specifically that, um, um, and I think as well, a lot of the minerals, like if you get into cobalt and those kind of things, I know then you're dealing with a lot of, you know, those, uh, mining practices in, in certain countries. Uh, the technology we're using doesn't include that, it's, it's the lithium iron phosphate. Um, so I don't have, I can't give you an, like a hundred percent explicit that I know where every component comes from those kind of manufacturers. But, um, you know, our policy, and, and I, and I'd also don't want to say that we have a full policy internally that, you know, we don't source from, but we really only use the, in all of our types of projects, you know, the, sort of the class A companies that have a lot of those policies in place and that are financeable and insurable.
One thing I would just add, well, it is new to Ontario, Ontario is moving quite heavily into the battery supply chain industry, all the way from mining lithium to the battery facilities that are being developed in southwestern Ontario, in Windsor and St. Thomas. So Ontario is doing quite a good job of sort of planting at stake as a key player in the, uh, battery supply chain at the moment.
No, that's very fair, and oftentimes I think it's the third parties, you know, not necessarily Siemens itself, you know, or, or their mines, but, um, you know, other mines where, whereby some of these minerals are coming from, right? Um, so that's one issue that's, that'll be on my radar for certain. And the other one, and I know you've addressed this, and much of the presentation was dedicated to, uh, to, to fire safety measures, but I do know that these fires burn with great intensity, and I'll be curious to get the fire chief's perspective on that. And it's a, you know, as a municipality that delivers fire services for the community, that'll be very, something that's very significant on my radar as this process evolves as well.
Uh, so as I mentioned, we have had some preliminary conversation, there's obviously quite a bit of continued discussion if the project moves forward and developing that formal plan. Uh, there are a number of experts in the field, uh, the fire safety field, and the sort of current best practice, as Paul was alluding to, is you manage the surrounding area, it's a very defensive strategy that they, uh, you're supposed to take when managing a battery fire, and there's a lot of safety features, which we didn't have time to get into all the nuances tonight. Uh, but there are a number of safety features built in that are there to, designed to protect the first responders and the surrounding area.
And, and thank you for that, and I'm sorry, Manny, the last one I have is, um, a bit of a hypothetical, but, um, God forbid, um, this technology turns out to be a dud, and God forbid that a proponent of one of these sites goes bankrupt. Um, who's left holding the bag, is it AESO? Respect to decommissioning the site and so on.
Yeah, so I, I think a couple of things, one is that, um, you know, it's, it's a question we've definitely heard beforehand, and it's a, it's a valid question, I mean, we've been in business for a long time, but, you know, nothing's ever certain in the future. The, the first thing I would say is, is that, um, you know, as I mentioned beforehand, the, the, this project will be in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And so the lenders will be your, you know, class tier one banks, pension funds, and, and these types of players. Uh, the reason they like these projects is because they're safe utility projects, which, and really the asset, the underlying asset of these projects is if you're awarded a contract from the province of Ontario to basically sell your electricity for the twenty years. And so it takes a long time for these projects to get paid back on, right? It's a very long payback period. And so, you know, it's also because it's that safe utility asset, it's not like we're building, you know, um, some other type of facility that's making products and then markets change, so this is a service, you know, that the province needs. Um, and so really, in the, the unlikely event that, you know, we were to go bankrupt, I mean, the lenders would step in because in order for them to get paid back their loan, um, the, the project's got to have, has to operate for the life of the project. So it does add another la, layer of, um, you know, sort of safety there. Uh, and in terms of on the decommissioning side, I mean, as I mentioned, we do have an obligation. Um, so once again, if we did go bankrupt, the, you know, the lender would step in and, 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 uh, take over all the obligations. And what they would likely do is, at some point, bring in another, you know, it could be Enbridge or somebody to come in, right? Um, in terms of the decommissioning, I mean, we do have an obligation with our landowner in our agreement with the landowner to remove all the equipment, restore the land to the condition it was. Um, you know, as mentioned, you know, there are recycling facilities, there is value in the batteries, they're not, there's still quite a bit of value in them in terms of being able to operate. But as well, you know, if we get to that stage, we're rewarded a contract and we're going through the permitting process with the municipality. I mean, we will, we will, you know, put together a decommissioning, you know, plan and protocol with municipality, you know, to sa, help satisfy the concerns as well. Thank you.
Councillor Hamilton.
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you, um, thanks, great presentation, lots and lots of information. I came in here knowing nothing, and now I think I know something. I think it's wonderful that you're actually, um, proposing to recapture the excess energy that we're currently having to sell in order to clear the grid, so that's, that's great. Um, you did mention, I mean, the, the one thousand dollars per megawatt sounds enticing, but I'm really curious about what you were alluding to when you said you would improve local electricity as well. Is that because of the stability in the grid? Like what, how would that directly benefit our community in any way?
Yeah, so, thank you councillor, um, and James will add in this as well. So, you know, this is, this is transmission infrastructure for the province. But one of the things that, um, and there's actually quite a number of these projects being proposed throughout all of eastern Ontario, is because, you know, the ISO, um, you know, they, they kind of review the grid every number of years, and, and they've sort of indicated that the eastern Ontario is a region that's going to have significant electricity needs, like beginning sort of currently, you know, soon and in the near term. So from a, from a, from an electricity system benefit for the exact local communities, like right around where the project's going to go, I mean, what it is doing is it's providing reliability and flexibility, you know, for the grid, you know, for the general sort of region. Um, from a, from a, a, you know, from a very localized perspective, um, you know, one of the benefits that it could have is that, you know, if you do have, for example, a, a significant blackout, there's a storm, you know, in a, you know, somewhere down the road, you know, a couple hundred, and, and the system gets knocked out. I mean, the fact that you do have this local electricity there, it may help to get the more local area, because they'll, but it's really more for a, um, sort of like the, call it the more regional benefit for the province. It's not a, a specifically just to that sort of area. This is a lot of electricity, like it's a, it's a lot of megawatts, and so really it's for the, um, it's for the more efficient use of electricity on the system, so we're not wasting it. But in addition to that, batteries do provide other voltage and other regulatory sort of help and controls for the system. So there are other system benefits, but those are kind of more technical, and so if James wants to talk about those.
I was going to jump in there, uh, having multiple resources spread throughout the province helps the province in terms of their voltage, the power quality, and those sort of more technical features of it. So the province doesn't want to have one massive centralized resource that then sends, sends it everywhere. It's looking to have a very distributed network of resources that are local, and it helps with the voltage levels, the power quality. As Paul was saying, if there is a blackout and there is power in the battery, having a resource local that can help re-energize those lines quickly, those are all hydro one and AESO decisions, but having those local resources there just make it a little bit more resilient and, uh, more robust system.
Yeah, just one more quick question, I want to echo councillor Schreiber's, um, concerns about fires. I'm pleased to see that you will be working with our local fire department to ensure that they understand the risks and what it is that they have to do in the event of a fire. It sounds like you think noise might be the biggest problem from a facility like this, not fire?
I, I, I don't, I mean, I think noise was, it's definitely brought up when we have community meetings. I would say that definitely fire is the, is the, is the biggest concern. Uh, and I think once again, for, you know, from a noise perspective, um, you know, as mentioned, you know, the provincial regulations in a rural area is the strictest sort of noise, you know, uh, regulations there are. So that noise does come up, it's one of the, sort of like listed as like maybe the top four, but I would definitely say from a concern perspective, it's more fire, and that's once again, once again, you know, with, for a number of development considerations, noise, you know, being close to people's homes, like, that's why we want to set things back as far as we can.
I, I would also just add that fire is one of the more common questions, as Paul was saying, but it's a very, fire is very unlikely with these systems, like, it's a question that's asked, it's sensationalized in the media, but they're very low-risk systems of fire, so looking at it, the system will make noise when it's operating, that's part of the fans running and the inverters and the transformers. So it's, there is a noise element there that's present during standard operation. A fire is a very unlikely event, and so, but it is a question a lot of the time.
Um, because of where you're hoping to locate this facility, if you get this contract, um, I, I'm curious about, yeah, I think I heard you say early in your presentation that you spoke to both municipalities, you're really on the edge of Crammy and on McCaldern up there. Did you speak with On McCaldern as well?
So, so the mayor, uh, from Aldwick did attend the open house, uh, we, at the moment, we've been working with the Cramme Planning Department, because we are in this township. Uh, we do have discussion or planning to have discussions with, uh, the planning department there, however, it is the Cramme Planning Department that has the jurisdiction over the site.
Deputy Mayor Arthur? Have you any questions? Have you any questions?
The only thing that I would, um, the only thing that I'd like to ask is when we go to, um, accept this delegation in their municipal support resolution, we're not approving that at this point, are we? We're only accepting the presentation? Because based on a lot of the questions from, I attended the open house last week, the questions that came forward earlier, the questions during, I am really thinking that we as council need to meet with our staff and go over some of these concerns before we provide a municipal resolution, um, approving this.
The motion tonight, Sandra, is the motion that we've, has a, a mover and a seconder, is only to receive this imp, for information, the delegation for information, that is the only thing that is on the table.
Okay, just, I just want to make sure, because I know within their documents, it says that they're looking, they're requesting that, so if we're accepting, I'm just wanting to clarify that we're not putting that out there yet.
But it will come forward, much as with all the solar farms that we have, that come before us, and they ask for an endorsement to proceed with the discussions, not the approval of, but the discussions to investigate further. All the solar farms that we've done and so on, and any wind farms or small, small wind operations, et cetera. It's the same process that we've gone through, the same, the same contingency, it doesn't mean we're approving it.
No, I, I agree, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not sending the letter of support out based on, until we are able to speak with staff, so that's good.
Right on, okay. Is there a date? You need this letter of support, you're, the applications are going in December, is that correct? The, the deadline for your applic-
Uh, yes, the, it's, December twelfth is the final date to submit, so we would, hopefully, if, if we, if the council wants to provide it, would be, you know, prior to that. I don't, there's not a specific timeline, but, you know, as, a little, you know, somewhat more in advance is, is definitely better as we're putting everything together, but yeah.
We, I do believe, I would have to confirm that David Nicole, but I do believe we're on the delegate, or on the agenda for the twenty seventh, I believe. Yeah, as a placeholder.
Did you hear that, Sandra?
The twenty seventh of what?
November is when it's coming, it's on the agenda for discussion, the twenty eighth of November, our, our council, we're in committee tonight.
Okay, no, that's fine, yeah.
So at the next council meeting, and this is a first, I mean, this is the first we're hearing of it, fair enough. So it will be the twenty eighth that it comes up from. Yes, it's all based on points when you go into the province and so on, much like the solar, solar things, and we're one little tiki. We're, we're not mega. Yeah, we are mega, whatever, whatever. Okay, thank you, any further questions or comments? Oh, councillor Schreiber.
Just one more comment, and this may be a second, second motion, but, um, I would like to add an additional motion whereby we, um, uh, direct staff to connect with the IESO, the Independent Electricity System Operator, and invite them to come to council to speak about their strategy around battery, energy, storage systems.
Good call. Good call.
So we have one motion on the floor to receive this delegation for information. Could I have a a vote, please?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Now, you are now proposing a second motion.
Yeah, I would like to propose a second motion whereby we invite, staff invites the uh, I E S O to speak to council about their strategic plan around battery, energy, storage systems.
Second, Benigman.
Why?
To my knowledge, they haven't um, provided us with any uh, information regarding their strategy on this particular initiative. And I'm just curious to understand what their long-term plan is in this space.
Okay, I get that. I'm just wondering, but we haven't talked to our own staff yet. Do you see what I mean? But you're saying that doesn't matter. They're the ruling party, and so you'd like to hear from them first.
Not necessarily first.
Well, yeah, okay, okay. All right. Okay, any further comments? The resolution. I E S O to come to council, make a presentation. All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
We can try.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Whatever. Aye, Martin. Resolution carried.
Thank you very much. If I could just, are there, at the end, are there more questions that we would that are allowed? Would we be like, is it good for us to stay to respond or that's not really for responding?
I can't guarantee that there will, I can't, I can't guarantee there will be questions. I suspect there may be. It's not a long meeting. It shouldn't be a long meeting.
I think, is there an opportunity for us to respond to the questions or are the questions to council, I guess, might be our understood.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item eight on the agenda, adoption of minutes, be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole approve the minutes of the items eight A through eight D. The Economic Development Advisory Committee of July seventeenth, Transportation Advisory Committee, minutes from August twenty eighth, the Heritage Crammy minutes from September twenty eighth, and the Committee of the Whole minutes from October tenth, all this year, twenty twenty-three. Could I have a mover into a seconder, please?
Move, Benigman.
Second, Hamilton.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. Item ten on the agenda, reports of municipal officers, ten A from the clerk's office, eighteen twenty-three. The report twenty twenty-four council meeting schedule. The resolution reads, be it resolved that Committee of the Whole received the report, Clerks eighteen twenty-three, for information, and that Committee of the Whole recommend to council that the twenty twenty-four council and committee meeting schedule be approved as presented. Could I have a mover into a seconder, please?
Moved, Hamilton.
Second, Benigman.
Any discussion? What, would you want to comment?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I, my only comment was there was days that were grayed out on there. Are those referencing conferences?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Carried. Sandra, by the way, you're, you're off to my far right. So if if you just speak up, if you, if you have something to say, I don't, I don't always catch you out of the corner of my eye. So if you want to, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not deliberately ignoring you. I'm just
Good to hear.
Concerned. Oh. Ten B, Public Works Transportation. Public Works Report eleven twenty-three, the winter operations policy. Be it resolved that Committee of the Whole received the winter operations policy from Public Works for information, and that Committee of the Whole recommend that council approve the policy, and council approves posting of a new policy on our township website. Could I have a mover into a seconder, please?
Move, Scriber.
Second, Hamilton.
Any comments?
I do if no one else was.
Tim Gilligan is going to speak.
Um, with it, it's just basically setting up a policy and procedural framework that the Public Works Department has been doing, but it's showing that with it, with minimum maintenance standards, um, that we are adhering to and to inform the public. And then further, we'd like to expand upon what we're putting forward, going forward and work with the Transportation Advisory Committee to expand upon any of this um, for it. And it's also for safety um, and informing the public basically for this as well.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Arthur.
Thank you. Um, and if I may through you, so the purpose of it is to provide guidelines for Public Works employees. Um, Public Works staff, as it says. So when I go to the very end of it, when we're driving poor conditions, why would we have that in there if this is for our Public Works employees during poor driving conditions, unnecessary travel is not recommended? I'm just wondering if we need to have that in there? And then the other was, um, the other was on the winter road patrol. Why? It's just I'm, I'm thinking waiting till December is really not what we should be doing because Mother Nature's playing with this a whole lot earlier that this should be November to March thirty-first, not December.
Mr. Gilligan.
In reference to it, they are um, on the roads every day. It's just uh, formally documenting, um, the routes would be from December. Um, regards to the last portion of it, driving in the snow, since we wanted to post it on the website, was more for information for the public, for safety, along with just informing the public what our uh, policy and procedure is that that has been to, that has been done in the past and that we're adhering to minimum maintenance standards. So it's really a growing document as well. And it's just information for the public um, that they can see on, that's what I'd like to put on the website, so that they can see if there's questions and divert information regards to, this is what takes place.
As long as we separately identify that, then that's great. Yep. And as long, as I said, I just, I think it's not just with some of the incidents that we've had, that November the first, and having that documented is, is, I wouldn't think a concern, but that was just my thoughts anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? Counselor Schreiber.
Through you, uh, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Gilligan. Tim, I'm just curious, um, this is, I I thought really great, and it provides a good um, sort of baseline in terms of, you know, how how the crew will operate. But I was curious, is this um, sort of also referencing, you know, best in class, so to speak, from other municipalities and what other folks are doing?
Yeah, this is, this is based around uh, the minimum maintenance standards, uh, OREG three six six eighteen, which stems to two thirty-nine oh-two. So it's to make sure that we are adhering to provincial policy and standards. And it's a a montage of uh, putting together different look, surrounding area um, municipalities uh, practices they do have currently on Ford, as well as uh, another township that's further away, that's similar in our, in our nature.
Thanks for that.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Twelve on our agenda, the open forum. Members of the public have three minutes to ask general questions and are not to enter into debate. Please state your name and address for the records. Each member may speak once. Have we any questions? We have the one that was written first, and then if anyone else wants to speak, by all means.
This is a question from Charlene Carr. Um, she sees on Facebook that we're looking for Committee for Painting, the Pride colors on our crosswalk in Colburn. Will there be one anywhere in Castleton as well? Was there a vote posted anywhere whether Crammy residents wanted one? And can we just buy a flag and fly it at the township office?
CEO Holly Grant will speak. Thank you for submitting the question. Um, this came before council, I believe, several months ago. Um, and there was a chunk of crosswalk slash roadway that was designated to the pride. Um, and a committee was formed. There is no dollar value attached from municipality or taxpayers. The committee was formed to raise their own money to put in the crosswalk in the places that council had approved. Castleton was not an option. It was not asked for. It was strictly for the downtown core of Colburn. Um, we can provide any committee. I'm sure they would love to have people join their committee in support of and to help out, um, to fundraise, to pay for it. So we could give that information out if anybody needs it.
In other words, it's not a committee of council. It's a public committee that is raising the money for the project if they want to proceed. And I understand that they are meeting soon. Once a month, every third Tuesday they meet. Are there any other questions? From the public? Any from on, oh, a hand is up? Samsung?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, it's uh, it's Ken Iwender. I'm just, it's on my cellphone. I'm not in the country right now. Uh, Ken Iwender, one forty-two of Warf Road. Uh, through you, Madam Chair, um, I don't know who to direct the question to. Um, I think, I don't know if Tim is there. I'm not sure who's actually there. It might be for Tim, Dawn, or um, Phil Kelly. Tim just uh, threw around following provincial guidelines. I'm just wondering if there's anyone there can answer me, answer the question as to why um, the railings at the promenade have no handrails as per OADA requirements. Um, they have to be on ramps, railings. Um, the stairs require tactile and tonal contrast at the edges. I'm just wondering, is it oversight, something that hasn't been looked after yet? Is it something that will be addressed before the snow falls? Thank you.
Mr. Gilligan, would you like to respond?
Uh, thanks, Ken, for the question. The uh, the project isn't finished as of yet. Um, we're aware of uh, the ODA, OADA. Um, the railings will be going on that, and it will be completed.
Are there any other questions? From the public, from the gallery?
Would that include the tonal strips down, Tim?
We'll adhere to whatever uh, has to be done um, through the regulation to deal with the ministry as well on it as well.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
No more questions? Okay.
My name's Steve Forsyth, uh, one four seven four seven Telephone Road, and a question in regards to the comment of a transfer station as compared to uh, their battery storage. Uh, to me, I don't believe they're the same because a transfer station doesn't store power. It can up it, can multiply it, but it's not a storage unit as compared to yours. I was wondering if I could get some clarification on that. Thank you.
So, uh, thank you. Thank you for the question. Yeah, um, you're, you're right in terms of, um, you know, they're not doing exactly the same things where, um, you know, where you have a, uh, you know, a Hydro One, you know, transformer substation, you know, you're basically, um, you know, the power's flowing through it. You may have, you know, different, yeah, you know, step-down transformers. If you have lower voltage lines coming out of that transmission stations to say to go to communities. Um, and so that's really dealing with more of the flow of electricity uh, and the sort of the uh, you know, the upgrading or downgrading of the electricity to flow, to say, local communities and those things. Energy storage is not doing that. You're right, it's not exactly the same. We're taking that existing electricity off the system and storing it. Um, I think my comparison was just more in that, you know, they're not exactly the same, but they're, they're in the same, they're in the same vein of of transmission infrastructure. Right? Um, we're connecting directly into the grid, you know, as I mentioned, you know, some of the connection equipment that we have to install and and pay for, Hydro One actually takes ownership of it. Um, and as well, even the environmental process that we have to go through with the province for the, for the class environmental assessment is the same process that Hydro One would undertake for a, say, a transmission substation. So it's not, you're right, it's not exactly the same. It's just in the same kind of vein of of uh, electricity transmission equipment. Does that sort of answer the question you were, as I said, you're right, it's not, it's not exactly the same, but they're both providing electricity-related services. One is more for the flow, and this one is more for the storage. Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. We will now move into closed session. The resolution reads, be it resolved that Committee of the Whole move into a closed session at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to the Municipal Act two thousand and one, section two thirty-nine E, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and that CEO Clerk Holly Grant, Deputy Clerk Nicole Hamilton, and CBO Dawn Buttwell, and bylaw enforcement Roger Dingman remain in attendance. Could I have a mover into a seconder, please?
Move, Scriber.
Second, Hamilton.
All in favor? You're on mute.
Aye, Arthur.
Aye, Hamilton.
Aye, Scriber.
Benigman, aye.
Martin, aye. Thank you. And we'll take a break here as we uh, transition to camera. Thank you. Thank you all for attending.